Good morning, everyone. We're having some technically difficult difficulties. We're sorry we're a little late. If everyone would please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the states of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, you're still on there twice, right, Trace?
Well, Carl, this July 1st meeting to order and hopefully be our last virtual meeting. Hopefully the next will be in person. I'll accept a motion for the reading and approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only. Ms. Hart?
We got.
Hold on, you're on there twice, Trace.
Okay.
We have two.
I know. We got one email from Marie Schumacher from Scranton. She asked a question, why was the agenda not available until this morning? And her second question was about Agenda Item 20-123124. I think she meant 134. The question was, what scope change that caused the need to amend this contract?
Okay, so the answers to those questions, Commissioners, Ms. Schumacher, thanks for writing in. The agenda was posted at 3:45 yesterday afternoon. We were waiting for a resolution from the Mid Valley School District. That was what was holding us up. We got that and Tracy put it on the agenda at that moment in time. The scope that changed for the new contract was there were thirteen and a half additional units of counseling services. So that is why it's the scope has changed. There's additional services that had to be added in. And that answers that question. If Ms. Schumacher has more questions about that, she can email me and Mr. Browning.
Okay, anybody have any other questions for Brian? All right, what else? Sorry.
That's it.
That's it.
On the agenda items.
Correct.
Right. Resolution 200139, approving current payables.
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund numbers, 304241-305739 inclusive totaling $3,986,914.94. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $8,913,622.78. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 1st, 2020. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, for a motion to approve that resolution?
I just had a question. There's two pretty big ticket items on there. One was. Comes up, there's two separate entries there for Joyce Jackman Bell comes about $218,000.
I'll look into it for you, sir, and we'll get back to you.
I could check that out for you, Commissioner, also. Could get back to you today on that.
Grant Electric, but I have a feeling that's for the prison addition, like 232,000.
I could let you know about that one also.
Okay.
Commissioner, I would think the Joyce Jackman Bell issue is a, or a inquiry is an insurance-related quote or a fee. But Controller DeBilio and Chief Jeffers will identify that pretty definitively.
Okay. Yes. These are already paid, is that correct, Mr. DeBilio?
Yes, they were all audited and approved by the Controller's Office and already paid. But we will get back to you on the details of those three items.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? A motion to approve current payables?
I'll make them.
Second?
Yep.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolution 200129.
Entering into an agreement to purchase property, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement to purchase half an acre of land from Peter A. DeSantis Jr. and Lillian H. DeSantis, located in the township of Covington for $9,000. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 1st, 2020. Here to speak on that, Commissioners is General Counsel Frederickson.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning. We were contacted about two weeks ago by the DeSantis's. They own a half acre parcel of land which adjoins the Covington, our property in Covington Township where the Covington Township Park is. Well, that's the county.
I doubt you broke up there. You're breaking up.
This property is surrounded by the park.
Correct. Correct.
It is, Chief Jeffers, maybe I can add to that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we were approached about two weeks ago by the property owner with their interest of conveying it over to the county. Attorney Frederickson reached out to Mr. Foley. Mr. Foley went up, viewed the property and made a recommendation back to us that it would be appropriate for us to enter into an agreement and that would be a property that the county should retain. So for those reasons, Attorney Frederickson prepared the sales agreement and that's what the Commissioners are voting on today. From here, we will go out, do the appropriate title searches, prepare the documents for closing and wrap it up.
Yeah, correct. And we have a signed sales agreement back from the sellers, so we're ready to proceed with the, you know, with the transaction once it's approved today by the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Entertain a motion approving.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 200130.
Proving the COVID-19 County Relief Block Grant Contract. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby request a COVID-19 County Relief Block Grant of $18,935,419 from the Department of Community and Economic Development to be used for all eligible grant activities relating to addressing the COVID-19 pandemic for all of Lackawanna County. Be further resolved that the applicant does hereby designate Jerry Torriani, Chairman of the Board of Commissioners, and Brenda Sacco, Acting Director, Department of Planning and Economic Development, as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between Lackawanna County and the Department of Community and Economic Development to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 1st, 2020. Here to speak on that, Commissioners is Director Sacco.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Lackawanna County applied for and was successfully awarded a COVID-19 County Relief Block Grant for the amount of 18.9 million from the Department of Community and Economic Development to be used for all eligible grant activities related to addressing the COVID-19 pandemic. This grant can be utilized for offsetting eligible costs of direct county response, assisting cities, boroughs, indoor townships, and various other COVID-19-related items for Lackawanna County. The grant covers eligible project costs that are incurred under the contract period between March 1st, 2020 and December 30th of 2020. Any questions?
I think the Commissioners need to know that we contacted all the municipalities. And I know that I contacted all of our department heads and row offices and the courts to get their things in. But your department has contacted all the municipalities too, correct?
Correct, yes. And we are receiving some items from the various municipalities and cities and throughout county departments as well.
Commissioners, also the boards and authorities were contacted.
Okay, that's great. Okay, anyone else? We'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 200130.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolution 200131.
Entering into agreement with Career Detective Agency, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, following a competitive procurement process by the Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board, does hereby enter into a service agreement with Career Detective Agency, Inc., 107 North Apple Street, Dummore, PA 185124, the provision of comprehensive security services at the Pennsylvania Career Link, Lackawanna County, 135 Franklin Avenue, Scranton, PA from July 1st, 2020 through June 30th of 2023. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 1st, 2020. Here to speak on this is also Director Sacco.
This resolution is authorizing the Commissioners to enter into the service agreement with Career Detective Agency for security guard services at our PA Career Link. These services were procured through a competitive bid process by the Workforce Development Board and adopted at their board meeting as well. Any questions?
So it was adapted at their board meeting?
Correct.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion, 200131.
Motion.
I'll second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 200132.
Office of Youth and Family Services Provider and Professional Contracts, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Provider Provider and Professional Service Contracts for the fiscal year July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, as attached. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 1st, 2020. Here to speak on that, Commissioners is Director Bill Browning. Professional contracts, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Department of.
I lost my audio.
There you go.
There we go. All right, good morning, everyone. These are the routine annual contracts. These are the professional service contracts. So this includes counseling, legal services, and other supportive and consulting services. The only difference from the annual contract is the addition of the roadway N, which we had previously paid through a provider by contracting with them directly will save about $20,000 a year.
Okay, any other questions from Mr. Browning? I'll entertain a motion on 200132.
Motion. I'll second.
One more question, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolution 200133.
Proving the State Food Grant Agreement, be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve a grant agreement between Lackawanna County Department of Human Services and the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture for fiscal year 2020 through 2025 for the state food purchase program. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 1st, 2020. Here also to speak on that is Director Browning.
This is the first year of the five-year grant for the food pantries that we use throughout the county. It is administered by the United Way. That's pretty much not much else to say. It's just to provide food for the needy throughout the county.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Browning? Okay, I'll entertain a motion, 200133.
I'll make a motion.
Good, second. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, resolution 200134.
Proving an amendment agreement for human services, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Human Services Department Fund Contract Amendment with the Jewish Family Services for an additional counseling service for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 1st, 2020. Here also to speak on that is Director Browning. Bill, we had a question in the Agenda Items Only section from the public. The question was, why is this amended? The answer that I gave, if you want to expand on this, or if this is the end of it, is that we had a thirteen and a half additional units of counseling services.
That is correct. It was additional usage, about additional $1,000 for their contract. We received, we have an offset from the Meals on Wheels that we also provided through this grant. This is separate from the Meals on Wheels contract through Aging and Other Sources. This was a small grant. We had underutilized the Meals on Wheels, so it really is, you know, it's a revenue neutral, I mean, expense neutral.
Anything else on this? Okay, we'll entertain a motion on 200134.
Motion.
Second.
The question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 200135.
Proving the Area Agency of Aging Provider and Professional Agreements, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Department of Human Services Area Aging on, Area Agency on Aging Provider and Professional Services Agreement for 2020 through 2023, as per attached. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 1st, 2020. Here to speak on this is Director Jason Kavulich.
Good morning, everyone. These are our standard contracts that we issue every three years. The contracts cover all our services that we provide, home delivery deals, home making, transportation, senior service, education. Anything that we do, the office these contracts cover. Is there any specific questions? Because I know there's quite a few of them.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Kavulich? Okay, entertain a motion to approve, 200135.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolution 200136.
Approving Area Agency on Aging Amendments, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging Amendments with Neighbor Works and the Greenhouse Project for 2017 through 2020, as per attached. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 1st, 2020. Here also to speak on that is Director Kavulich.
These two amendments are part of our effort during the pandemic to bring other services to older adults. The Greenhouse Project has been providing for us mobile and Zoom classes for seniors so that we can continue to have activities and cut down on some of the isolation. We understand that there's not, you know, there's not, there's a population of individuals that don't have internet access, but at least we're providing some services to those that do. The contract we have with Neighbor Works expands our Aging in Place Initiative, which is that, which helps us keep older adults in their home rather than a skilled facility or a higher level of care with home modifications and, you know, and light maintenance work that can be done by an individual or their family to keep things safe. They'll also be working to expand our consumer reimbursement program and our caregiver support program. The caregiver support program is critical to our services as they move forward. They are federal dollars that we receive. It's been an underutilized funding stream. Neighbor Works will help us, you know, bring promotion to that program and let individuals understand how it works and that they can access it and that those resources are greater for us and we can provide more services to those who don't qualify for those services through our option services, which I just spoke about.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Kavulich?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, 200136.
Make a motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 200140.
Yes, Commissioners, everyone, this is very long, so bear with us. It's going to take a while to read this. Approving alerta for the Alephin Borough. A resolution to provide for tax exemption for certain deteriorated industrial, commercial, and/or other business property, defining eligible deteriorated areas, setting a maximum exemption period and starting date, and providing a procedure for securing an exemption pursuant to the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, alerta, 72PA CS Section 4722. Whereas the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania passed Act 76 of 1977, subsequently amended this legislation on July 13th, 1988, known as the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, alerta, 72PA CS Section 4722, authorizing local taxing authorities to grant a tax exception for defined deteriorated industrial, commercial, and other business property. Whereas prior to the adoption of the within resolution authorizing the granting of tax exemptions within the Borough of Alephin, the Borough Council of the Borough of Alephin, Lackawanna County, here and there after the Borough, after giving required notice, held a public hearing on June 23rd, 2020 for the purpose of determining and affixing the boundaries of the areas or areas wholly or partially located within the jurisdictions delineated, sorry. Whereas prior to the adoption of the within resolution authorizing the granting of tax exemptions within the Borough of Alephin, the Mid Valley School District, Lackawanna County, here and there after the district, held a public meeting on June 24th, 2020 for the purpose of determining and affixing the boundaries of the delineated or areas wholly or partially located within its jurisdiction for granting a alerta. Whereas the county desires to designate deteriorated property within the Borough of Alephin as that term is defined in the Local Economic Revitalization Assistance Act, as defined within the ordinance below, eligible for alert tax exemption to the, to this deteriorated property, which deteriorated property comprises of 93.769 acres of land and is more specifically identified as Exhibit A, only including the lands in the Borough of Alephin. Now therefore be it hereby ordained and enacted by the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, the deteriorated property, which deteriorated property comprises of approximately 93.769 acres of land and is more specifically identified in Exhibit A, is eligible for alert tax exemption in accordance with the following provisions pursuant to the Alert Assistance Act. Section 1, definition is deteriorated property means any industrial, commercial, and other business property owned by an individual, association, or corporation and located in a deteriorating area is as here and after provided, or any such property which has been the subject of an order by a government agency requiring the unit to be vacated, condemned, or demolished by reason of noncompliance with laws, ordinance, or regulations, and located within a deferred deteriorated area in the Borough or and County. Improvement means significant repair, new construction, or significant reconstruction includes alterations and additions having the effect of rehabilitating a deteriorated property so that it becomes habitable or attains higher standards of safety, health, and economic use or is brought into the compliance with laws, ordinances, or regulations governing such standards, but ordinary upkeep and maintenance shall not be deemed an improvement. Section 2 exempt exemption amount. Property taxes on the deteriorated property shall be exempted on the increase in an assessment attributed to the actual cost of improvements to the deteriorated property for the time period authorized by an alerta, subject to the schedule of exemption authorized by the county in Section 3C. Any exemption granted under the authority of this ordinance shall be limited to improvements which have been requested in accordance with this ordinance and which have a separate assessment from the Lackawanna County Assessor, separate and distinct from the real estate property tax assessment, which is not exempt from taxation under the alerta or the terms of this ordinance. Section 3 exemption, the county has determined that this, that the deteriorated property, which is the subject of this ordinance and to which this ordinance pertains, which deteriorated property comprises of 93.769 acres of land and is more specifically identified as Exhibit A is eligible for alert tax exemption in accordance with the provisions of the Alert Act. B, the county hereby grants a tax exemption for any request under the terms of the within ordinance pursuant to 72PS 4726. The improvements of the property shall be exempt from real property taxes as a result of the increase in the tax assessment valuation for the property attributed whether or not the assessment eligible for exemption is based upon the actual cost or a maximum cost. The actual amount of taxes exempted shall be in accordance with the schedule of taxes exempted established by the county consistent with the following limitations. The length of the schedule of taxes exempted shall not exceed 10 years. The schedule of taxes exempted shall stipulate the portion of new construction or improvements to be exempted each year. The exemption from taxes shall be limited to the additional assessment valuation attributable attributable to the actual cost of new construction or improvements to deteriorated property or not in excess of the maximum per cost unit established by the county. C, any tax exemption granted hereunder shall commence upon the first day of the first full tax year following issuance of the new assessment in connection with the completion of the improvements and such tax exemptions shall continue for a term of 10 years for the date thereof. The schedule of real estate taxes to be exempted shall be in accordance with the below portion improvements to be exempted each year, year 1 to 10. 100% taxation with 0% of the value, 0% of the value of the improvements to be paid base year, notwithstanding anything to the contrary, to the extent permitted by law. Upon commencement of the tax exemption hereunder, the following four parcels shall remain assessed and otherwise pay a real estate tax at the following values for the 10-year exemption period regardless of the increase of values to land or improvement exempted thereon base valuation. Further, there shall, further, there is no limitation on the levy of tax millage. And the base valuations are then the uniformity of taxes for all properties in the Borough of Alephin, Mid Valley School District, and Lackawanna County. It is understood that this section is intended to provide the taxing bodies with consistent tax revenue based upon an established valuation at the time of passage of this ordinance and to provide the landowner with the assurance of a maximum valuation for the consistent 10-year time period and is not intended to add a further tax to the owner applicant. In the event an increase in the land valuation only, the improvements have been exempted. The owner and applicant shall first be given full credit for the combined tax paid on evaluation and improvement referred to in the base valuation. You guys can read all those numbers, I'm sure. Section, I think words get paid by the word here, right, Frank? D, the alerta exemption granted under the ordinance shall be upon the property and shall not terminate upon the sale or exchange of the property. Section 4, request for exemption, A, the request for alert exemption shall be made on the form attached as Exhibit B to this ordinance or such as form as adopted by the Borough. B, the request for alert exemption shall be made at the, at the time of the building permit is requested from the Borough. C, the request for alert exemption shall be made in writing to the Borough's Municipal Office, 113 Will Avenue, Alephin, PA 18407. D, a copy of the request for alert exemption shall be sent to the Lackawanna County Assessor by the Borough. Section 5, attempting the, obtaining the exemption. Upon completion of the improvement, the property owner shall inform the Borough and Lackawanna County Assessor in writing that the improvements are completed. This notice must be given to the Borough so that a certificate of occupancy can be issued and to the Lackawanna County Assessor so it may assess the improvements for calculating the new assessment for the property. Section 6, severability. The provisions in this ordinance are severable. If any paragraph, sentence, provision, clause, or portion shall be held to be illegal, invalid, or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdictions such illegality, invalidity, or unconstitutionality shall not affect or impair any of the remaining paragraphs, sentences, provisions, clauses, or portions of this ordinance. It is hereby declared to be the intent of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners that this resolution would have been adopted had the illegal, invalid, unconstitutional paragraph, sentence, provision, clause, or portion not been included. Section 7, effective date. The ordinance shall become effective on July 1st, 2020 and its term shall continue in effect without annual reapproval exemption. From property taxes granted hereunder shall be for 10 years and shall be determined in accordance with Section 4. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on July 1st, 2020. Mr. Chairman, to speak on this is Attorney Frank Reserio, Solicitor Frank Reserio, sorry.
Chief Jeffers, thank you very much. The highlights essentially, it is alerta on behalf of Alephin Borough for 93.769 acres. It's a 10-year alerta and most significant is the tax exemption only applies to the increase in improvements, not to the existing assessment as it stands now. So the county will continue to receive tax dollars resulting from this property while at the same time offering. while at the same time offering economic incentives for industries and other businesses to come in and and open up shop. So with that, if there are any additional questions, Chief Jeffers did a great job reading the entirety of the resolution.
He's been having a good one, Brian.
Again, I know that the both the school district and the Borough have signed off already on the LERTA.
Correct, correct.
Thank you. Okay, on that, I'll entertain a motion on two zero zero one four zero.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Okay, a motion two zero zero one three seven.
A motion to award the Lee Road Bridge replacement in Greenfield Township to T. Brennan Heavy Equipment, the lowest most qualified bidder in the amount of five hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Here to speak on that is engineer from G P I, David Johns.
Dave, do you want to discuss your motions?
Frank, you want to take over?
Sure, yeah, I could I could speak to these projects. My audio was cutting out when I joined, so what is the motion on the floor? Is it for both sites, or did you mention one specific?
The motion on the floor, sir, is the Lee Road Bridge replacement only. It's for the company of Brennan Heavy Equipment.
Yes, all right, Lee Road Bridge Replacement. So this is a bridge replacement project in Greenfield Township. This proposed project replaces the structurally deficient bridge over Dundaff Creek. The existing structure is structurally deficient and in much need of replacement. It continued to have flooding issues as the current Cory Mill pipe crossing has partially collapsed and can't convey the original design capacity. The project is funded through Act Thirteen funds. The low bidder is T. Brennan with a price, like you said, of five hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-five cents. The project came in approximately close to the estimate, and this final price was coordinated with the Roodham Bridge Department as well as the the Office of Revenue and Finance to confirm funding. At this time, we don't have any concerns with any traffic control issues. We believe the project can be built in one construction season, and Greenfield Township is very much in support of this project. So at this time, we entertain any questions from the Commissioners or anyone. But in summary, we, G P I, we recommend award.
Let me just add, Commissioners, good morning. I was having a little bit of technical difficulties with my headphones, I couldn't hear.
Okay, entertain a motion on motion two zero zero one three seven.
I'll make them.
Second.
Whatever.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Okay, motion two zero zero one three eight.
This is a motion to award the Van Brunt Bridge replacement in Moscow Borough to T. Brennan Heavy Equipment, the most low, lowest most qualified bidder in the amount of six hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. Here to speak on this is either David or Frank from G P I.
Dave, you want to lead us on?
So, good morning, Commissioners. This project is the Van Brunt Street Bridge in Moscow, and we solicited bids again, and the lowest, most responsible bidder was T. Brennan at six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. Again, this project will be reimbursed through Act Thirteen monies.
Doesn't cost the county any money.
Correct.
Okay, anybody have any questions for David?
Nope.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
Make a motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Opportunity for the public to address the board. Ms. Hart, you have any emails from the public?
I do, we have a couple. The first one's from Marie Schumacher of Scranton. She asks, when will the public be allowed to attend these meetings in this building? What are you doing to secure an alternative contractor who will accept commingled waste? Tough luck to the recyclers that you may send your items to increase the height of Garbage Mountain and is not acceptable to this taxpayer. Last week, I watched the video of your February twentieth, twenty nineteen, meeting to hear the discussion on the city of Scranton's LERTA, Agenda Item nineteen dash zero zero four three immediately following the LERTA vote, and it caught my attention as it dealt with software for the single tax office in all county land records offices. It occurred to me that this is step one of the county reassessment. Please make my day and tell me that I am correct, and if I am not correct, please tell me how well spending these tax dollars returns our investment.
Commissioners, I can answer some of these questions. The first is, when will the public be allowed to attend these meetings in this building? We are working feverishly, as everyone knows, to put glass in all our offices. We have been working on this since May, and we are near complete with that. When the glass is installed in the Commissioners' conference room, we will start having public meetings. I hope that to be for the next Commissioners' meeting on July fifteenth. If that is the case, we will put some rules in place as how to the public can can contact us because it will be on a reservation process only. The way we have social distance, the chairs down there, there is enough room for a deputy controller in the front row, the CFO and Scranton Times in the front row, four directors in the back, and I believe there's five chairs for the public to come in. So with that being said, when I have that figured out in the next couple of days or week, and depending upon when Mesco Glass can get the partitions up.
Just so everyone is aware, these were these companies that do make these partitions, they were overwhelmed because of this. We reacted quickly, we reacted in March.
That's true. Most of our, all of our roll offices are taking care of so far. I believe the single tax office is finished and completed, and we are going through with all of our departments here with glass and partitions to and bringing back employees as that happens. But that being said, I will answer Marie in an email about that. The and the public, I'll let it be known when we're going to open up. And the second one about the commingled waste, there's a couple other ones that Tracy has asked the same question. I'll address that after they're read into the record. I will have to go back and look at the video from February twenty, twenty nineteen, to find out what she's referring to here about the single tax office and that. I can tell you that I wasn't, none of us were attending that meeting at that time. However, I don't believe it's any part of a phased county reassessment. I don't know what she's referring to there.
I think it pertains to Tyler Technology Software, where it ties in all of the land.
Well, I'll look at it and get her an answer, okay? I'll email her.
Okay.
Okay. The next one is from William O'Malley of Dunmore. He asks, do you know when the lease for the recycling center ends? Is there anything we can do besides sending our recyclable materials to the landfill? It's an abomination that the recycling center operator won't accept recyclables because he doesn't have cheap inmate labor and likely won't until next year. It is unacceptable, and the taxpayers of this county deserve better.
But once again, I'll address that, and the answer I'm going to give is a short one, but I will I will address everything when, I think she has, I think Tracy has one more about recycling.
This one is from Joe Healy of West Scranton. He says, good morning. Since Lackawanna County is moving into a safer phase in relation to the COVID virus, could you please provide us with an update about when recycling blue cans will return to normal? Since the outbreak, it was communicated to us that for some reason, blue recycling was too dangerous to continue, while red recycling and regular trash pickup would remain the same, because they have treated all plastics slash glass, et cetera, as regular trash that has left us no choice but to contribute to the size of their landfill. Could council please obtain the following from them? A written scientific explanation of why they were slash are not able to safely meet the obligations of what they are contracted to do and how the decision to restrict only certain services was made. When do they anticipate blue recycling to resume? Since putting out separate blue recycling has been futile, why is there still two separate crews for pickup when everything on blue recycling week could be collected together with regular trash? Since it's my understanding that the landfill is paid by weight, please correct me if I am wrong, can we expect our bills to be adjusted accordingly for services we did not in fact receive? Perhaps the city could look into reimbursements from insurance policies from Keystone that they may have in place with unforeseen circumstances like this that inhabits them from fulfilling their contractual obligations. And lastly, while we still have a fine group of Commissioners who no doubt are trying to put corruption behind us and the best interests of our citizens in front, can we please take advantage of the opportunity to take a serious look into other options to handle city slash county garbage? Be sure that citizens have not yet forgotten that among other outrageous practices tolerated by the city, their blatant and repeated use of literal slave labor from our prisoners to staff, their operations virtually for free is not only morally reprehensible, but disproportionately financially advantageous to their operation to compete with others. At the bare minimum, the city slash county deserves rebates for the fees paid to them for work that is completed using our prisoners at zero cost to them. I know they are a big hill to tackle, but given recent events with their attempts to unlawfully expand their landfill, the public is now well aware of the corruption, and I would feel overwhelmingly supportive if the county pursues these issues I raised to the full extent. Thank you so much for all you do. Your hard work does not go unappreciated by many citizens. And that's it.
That's all of it. So just to address this recycling issue very quickly. Number one, when COVID nineteen hit, it was understood that we had to get the inmates out of the recycling center so they would not be exposed to COVID nineteen and bring it back into the prison and then therefore infect not only other inmates and staff, but throughout the entire prison in Quidda Fort. So that was the first, first thing that we did was we took the inmates back. Secondly, subsequently, since then, most of all the inmates that would be relieved, that would be eligible for that program have been subsequently released from prison, paroled, house arrest, or early, early release. We are not going to, the Commissioners are not going to be sending back inmates to the county recycling center. Ever, basically. Even if they they had the manpower out of the prison right now, that's still not going to happen. The Commissioners feel as though this is not a worthy thing to do. And Barbara, G, and all of you and myself will be meeting with the municipalities to go over their options in a very short time, probably within a week. Barbara is handling that and talking to the municipalities. There are twelve mandated municipalities in Lackawanna County that must recycle, nine of which actually do recycle with the recycling center. The other three that are mandated on Park Summit, South Abington, and the city of Carbondale choose to have private haulers. The rest of the county uses private haulers also. So there are nine, and there are some communities that also bring in some recycling when they need to. But there are nine mandated municipalities that we will be talking to, plus the other ones that are also mandated that use the other option. So we will talk to them within a week, give them their options. The county is not mandated to recycle. They built the recycling center about nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety, to help out communities and provide them with free recycling over the years. Clearly, without any labor or manpower out there, we can't continue to do that. So we will give the municipalities their options and help them out with their options, and that's what we're talking about.
The county Commissioners never ordered any inmates to to work at the recycling center. And they were paid even though it was slave labor, right wages, but they volunteered to do it, and it was, they were done, sent there by the court system. They were allowed to go there if they wanted to. We did not send anyone there. They, you know, some money, I guess, apparently is better than none. And it's, you know, we, the landfills, both landfills in Lackawanna County are required to accept it, and they have recycling areas at the landfills where people can take it, but they're not required to, they're required to do that, the county is not required to to accept it. The municipalities that have more than five thousand people are required to recycle three items. At one time, it was something that, you know, that worked, and it doesn't work well any longer, and we're looking for ways to help the municipalities and fix it.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm taking your spot, Sheriff, Mr. Chairman, it's Commissioners' other business.
Commissioner Shermack.
But on a good note, our Veterans Affairs Office and specifically Dave Isley, the director, you know, I got to see what he does. I mean, this guy works day and night taking care of our vets. He does a phenomenal job, and just to show what he's done, I've looked at some of the reports. You go back to June two thousand and fifteen, the federal funds that he gets for the veterans, and that's their pay, and then to do whatever they need, the monies that go to all the vets in Lackawanna County. Two thousand and fifteen, seventeen million dollars, seventeen point seven million dollars. Now we get fast forward to two thousand and twenty. So this goes from June nineteen, from nineteen to June of two thousand and twenty. We're up to, or Dave's up to fifty-two and a half million dollars. That specifically is federal funds that go right to the vets here in Lackawanna County. So he does an unbelievable job. As a Marine, he takes this very seriously and just does a terrific job. So I just really like to commend Dave and bring it to everybody's attention what he's doing down there. So congrats to him, and it's just great for the vets, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominic.
I have nothing.
Okay, that's it, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Nauterian, if I may, as a quick follow-up to Commissioner Shermack's questions about a couple of payments that were made. Scranton Electric Heating and Cooling was paid for work out at the new Criminal Justice Center out on Wyoming Avenue behind the prison. The work was a public bid. My chief internal auditor, Reggie Mariani, has provided those details. And also, payments to Joyce Jackman and Bell Insurance is for insurance for the county, commercial property insurance for Chubb Insurance Company, seventy-four thousand, to Travelers Insurance Business Auto General Liability and Umbrella for thirty-four thousand, sixty-three thousand, twenty-four thousand, totaling one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, and that's a professional service. Anything further I can fill you in in more detail, Commissioner Shermack?
Okay, thank you.
I am not sure where Jerry is, but is there anything else? As Vice Chair, I'll just move for a motion for adjournment. There he is.
Okay, you know, my comment about the prisoners going there, I used the term slave labor. I should not have done that, but they were they were paid less than prevailing wages, and I feel awful about my remark. I'd like to apologize. On that note, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.